Led by Mr. Smith.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America, to the republic, with which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Just a reminder that if there's an emergency, close the sections at the rear door, out this door to the rear of the building. Please go to your vehicles, please do not leave until subordinated by emergency service personnel. If you are a smoker, camp in the building, outside.
Yes, good evening. I have two approvals tonight. First is the approval of the board meeting minutes on March 23rd, 2015.
Motion to accept is presented.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Any changes, additions, additions? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried.
And secondly is the reorganization meeting of April 6th, 2015.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. I have to apologize, that was on the website ahead of the long time, I know some people are going to go ahead and do it, but sometimes things will happen. The treasure closet.
Good evening, everybody. Not so much tonight, just the bills. We have for the period of March 26th through April 13th, bills total of $362,455.22. The five largest, number one, PSE and G Long Island, the building lighting, $37,407.99. Eastern Resource Recycling, street sweeping removals, et cetera, $20,133.35. All pure legal expenses for building department, $9,550. H2M, a general retainer for the Clear Rose Project, $7,515.95. And worldwide security installation of two cameras on this main street, $6,666.66. They total $81,273.95. If I could have approval.
Motion to accept is presented.
Motion.
Any questions? Concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried.
Well, I do request an approval for the general fund, the loan capital projects fund, $26,553.48, which we will get back.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So carried.
And for the board's information, you have our cash balances as of March 31st. Thank you.
On the first agenda that had gone out a couple of days ago, there's an indication that we're going to be doing a public hearing on the single-use carryout bags. We're not doing that public hearing this evening, all we're doing this evening is setting the date for the public hearing. So if you hear comment on it, we're not going to be getting any comment on it until that date. You can probably sit down here anyway now.
Sir?
Yes?
Would you even not be taking commentary in public speaking time?
Well, you can, but it'll go on the record, but it's not going to go on the official record for the hearing itself, so you're going to have to wait for that.
Thank you.
That's 26, Tuesday, 26th.
Do you have a first meeting yet?
First or second? Okay.
May 11?
May 11. Motion to make a public hearing for May 11?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, request approval to add the titles of Justice Court Director and Senior Assessment Book to the Court of Boarding meetings, Level 342, effective June 1, 2015. This creates the civil service position for our senior court clerk. And also, the senior assessment clerk is also, gets a promotion to that position as we've grown, so has the responsibilities and the issues that she deals with on a day-to-day basis to all the new properties. Motion to accept is presented.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. A resolution will authorizing an amendment to an engineering services agreement to conform with the EAGU State Environmental Facilities Corporation requirements. I'm going to ask Attorney Eagan to explain that with us.
Sure. This is for the housekeeping on the appointment of the sewer engineers, as the village is getting ready to do sewer projects, both under River Avenue, potentially as part of Go Share, the Governor's Office of Sandy Recovery Sewer. One of the sources of state funding is the Environmental Facilities Corporation, and they are very specific in what they require from a funding standpoint with regard to the retention of our village engineers. EFC is a pool of money that we may want to have access to, especially in this competitive funding environment, that's both with potential grants, but also for 0% interest, we've used their funds before. So in consultation with EFC and reviewing the original contract with our sewer engineers, the recommendation from both was that this amendment be approved to, as a non-construction contract, being that that's what the engineers are as a professional service, that this addendum be added to that. I've reviewed the addendum and it's consistent with what our other approvals are.
You know, Attorney Eagan mentioned the two sewer projects. The River Avenue one, which will be approved in the, well, awarding the bid this evening, is sewers and road raising down on Sunset Price and Mays, and putting, and doing home bookups there. And then we're in the middle of working with the Governor's Office of Sandy for an $18 million, we can stop, putting in about $18 million worth of 650, thereabouts?
Two hundred and fifty.
Fifty homes being connected to the sewer down South Bachelorette. And if done right, it shouldn't cost us a dime. So, but. The motion to, all in favor?
Aye.
Request approval for a standing work team reporting resolution for elected officials. This is a standard resolution we get this time of the year, and it's, the boarding resolution for elected and appointed officials is just a format that we have to do with the new state retirement system. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Request approval to award the bid for River Avenue Sewer Extension Drain Improvement to Agile Contracting in the amount of $2,299,000, as per recommendation, H2M Architects and Engineers. So you understand that project, like I said, that's the searing of the area down at the end of River Avenue. The funds coming from million dollar grant that we're able to receive in the dormitory authority, $580,000 from the county, and after $580,000 is the funds that will be used for the home bookups, and $700,000 of sewer surplus, that sewer surplus is for key money, when we have built certain developments within the village, whether it be Bay Village, whether it's the new development you see happening up on the Seminole Skyway, the Vineyards, the Riverwalk, the Riverview, they all pay what's called a key money charge, which is $30 a gallon based upon the projected usage. So this $700,000 from key money does not affect the resident taxpayer at all, nor does the pay, does it affect the sewer, those that are in the sewer district. This money is money that we receive through fees to those that have hooked up to the sewer. So what's really great about this is that means $700,000 that was given to us for commercial bookups is now being used to take care of residential maintenance. So a motion to accept and award the bid to the River Avenue Sewer to Agile Contracting.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll be at you, Dennis Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Just so you know, Dennis is being honored Wednesday night by some county local officials. We present our award.
Looking forward to it. Thank you. No, we appreciate it. Mr. Mayor, trustees? I'm sorry. Looking forward to that too. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, trustees, treasure closet attorney. Eagan? Oh, there you go. Ladies and gentlemen, Dennis Smith with the BID report, I'm going to actually do updates on things that I've spoken about already. As far as the cameras, we're at a temporary standstill, we've got two that are ready to go, we just need to prep the area that they have to go in. I'm waiting for word on electric on the four corners. We've come to the understanding that there is electric there. Louis had the bucket truck today, he was going to try and take a look at it, he wasn't able to get to it, he's going to do it tomorrow. If there's electric there, we can get that up within a week, we'll just make a spot on it, so that's good to go. And then the second spot, the Church Street parking lot, I'm just looking for clearance and connectivity from the Pat Med Congress of Teachers, and obviously they did that in last week, so I didn't expect that from last week. I'm hoping to hear something from Mr. Tubman and their board this week. And again, once that happens, that camera, you know, could go up inside of a week, so, you know, looking forward to getting that done sooner rather than later. Briefly, the farmer's market, the Sunday morning market, I had a conversation with Ethel Perry last week from the Long Island Growers Market, she's getting some more vendors, she's waiting for the insurance and the proper paperwork from them. She's also offering it out to local businesses, like if we have local businesses that want to participate, and they have a related item, basically something that's related to food, you know, we can solicit them to go through her and be a part of the market for Sunday mornings. What I'm probably going to do in the next, let's say in the next week or two, is maybe I'll draft a letter and just at least look at businesses that are in that area now, and then let other businesses on Main Street and South Ocean, and then, you know, within the village, that might have an interest in joining in, you know, let them know that that is an opportunity, and if they contact, how that could happen. So that should be an exciting event as we move into the summer.
They're going to what, eight to one?
It's going to be eight to one, Sunday mornings. And, you know, I mean, there's one Sunday, and then, I mean, already that it's not going to work, and that's Sunday, September the 13th, that's the stuff they can't ignore that. But at that point in time, I think we'll have it established enough where we could maybe move it into the, you know, one of the parking lots, the one, the new Village parking lot, the parking lot adjacent to where it's going to be, and we probably wouldn't miss a beat of it, you know, so, you know, we'll do that going forward. Probably don't stop pushing that. I'm sorry. Yeah, well, you know, for the month Sunday, if that's what we choose, but I'm thinking you could just move it, you know, just move it into New Village Parking Lot or something like that at that point, put some signage out there that says, hey, this is where it's going to be for this Sunday. Again, in September, it will be well established, and I don't really think I'd miss a beat if we did something like that.
Maybe the Suffolk County Court, maybe that. That layout might be good.
It might be, assuming Suffolk County's like, and it would use that as some kind of a staging area, since we're in turn around, I don't know that, they may, they may not, I don't necessarily know that yet. But that's, you know, that's a consideration as well. I've updated the locations and information on the sign, the maps, for all three tourist key signs that I spoke about the last meeting, and given that information to Sign Around Up, the original sign, it has the tablet, they're working on the, updating the three boards that have the one of the signs. Of course, when that happens, we already have them at the railroad station and at the ferry terminal, so we can swap those out right away. I talked to Marion Russo from CDA, and she has funds to paint that theater wall, so we're going to paint it probably white to start, because right now it's all flaking and it doesn't look too appealing. We're going to paint it white, we're going to get the sign mounted on it, and then there's been some interest of putting a mural on there. So once we do that, then, you know, we'll go to the arts community and see what we can do with a mural to tie in around that sign on the, basically the canvas that we're going to put on the side of the wall. Hope to have that done within the next month, certainly before Memorial Day. Had spoken a couple of weeks, or maybe at the last meeting, about the flag banners that we were going to order, the BID was going to order, we did order them, 51 flag banners are now in, they're at EPW Yard, they'll be put up before Memorial Day, and they'll be put up in conjunction with the traditional existing flags that we have left. I don't really quite have a Joe who's proposing to do that, we're thinking of just going from the four corners with the banners out, and then supplementing the, you know, the regular American flag after that, or coming up with some kind of a tie-in to lay them in. With the banners, you should get a little more, we should, they should last longer, because the core flags, after two years, they don't look good enough to where you want to put it out there and they need to be retired, or they, you know, they just don't exist anymore, they've gotten torn up with the weather. So hopefully we'll do that and that'll present a better look on Main Street. None related big news, we had preliminary parks project walkthrough and meeting with Cornell Rothschild, the landscape architect, and DHB, the engineering firm, being considered for the Patchogue Village Parks Project, the updated project. Trustee Hilton and Marie Justizia, the director of the Parks and Recreation, along with Building Inspector Peter Sarich, took us on a walking tour of the Patchogue Parks to be improved. And it was very helpful, because we all got the better understanding of what not only needs to be done, but what can be done. Like, there were some good ideas that came out of that, I mean, a soccer field that doesn't exist now, might happen down by the Four Sisters, but everything's at a preliminary stage now, but there were some good ideas that were banded about going forward, so it was certainly a worthwhile day, you know, I learned a lot, I think Cornell and DHB learned a lot, and I think it's going to be a great plan going forward, and, you know, thank you for your expertise on that, trustee. We followed that up with a sit-down meeting later in the afternoon, better acquainted parties, and outlined some preliminary procedures going forward. For that meeting, we had Ann Monti and Marion Russo join us, since they're going to be part of the project going forward as well. We did receive a sample question from Cornell Rothschild for a questionnaire survey to be sent to village residents, that we're going to tell that to our needs and insert it in the annual Department of Rec guide that's set out every, I guess that's the beginning of May, right?
Yep.
Marie and I did contact Amanda today from Scantrons, just to get some further instruction with her, and see what we had to do if that's the route that we choose to take. So we emailed a copy of the sample question in to her, she's going to look at it, let us know what our options might be, and then we'll have follow-up conversations with her as the week progresses.
Yes.
Yeah.
With that, with Scantrons, can you find out, know whether they provide the service where maybe it will be filled out online?
Okay.
Whether they have that capability?
Because that is something, I was going to mention that too, that is something that we want to, we want to be able to present it online, and...
Those things are pretty easy to set up these days, like, sure, they won't be...
That's exactly what I was saying, so we do want to, we want to get it online, and we want to, we want to get it translated into Spanish as well, so that we, you know, we can, we have an option with reaching everybody out in the community.
Well, I think, the thing about it is that if Scantrons is going to score a co-leader for us, if they're capable of doing it online, where they could, we send them the hard copies and they can do it, and they do it online. And it's extremely important that it gets out there to people, maybe through the newspapers, you know, we can put in the papers.
Okay, a little ahead, that's, look out for true.
Yeah.
I think it's great, the Scan, the only difficulty I see was the, at least half the questionnaire that we received from the contractor was very subjective questions which required written answers.
They'll give you those also.
With Scantrons?
Yeah, they'll give those back to you. We use it for the certain valuations and certain community values for Cornell, and all of those have a comment section, they will take it.
Oh, good.
They, comments, they'll actually take the comments, improve them positively, make information, so it really makes it very easy, then they give you the breakdown and evaluation for it, so. Hopefully we'll get a good response. How many did you send out?
There was 4,200 households.
Okay. If we get 10% of those back, we can get about 3%.
Yeah, you know, that's, we'll wait, yeah, it might be one.
But the key, I think, is to, is to get this portion of it, you know, put to bed so that we can catch up with that, because you're on a tight schedule for getting that part.
Yeah, we got to get that out.
And get that out like the next week to 10 days, I would imagine, right?
Yeah, I mean, registration is the first week of June, so we like to get it out at least the third week of May.
Oh, okay, so we have a few weeks, a couple of weeks anyway. Yes, okay, right, because that, that was kind of the timeframe that Louis and I were talking about.
Right, and then how we're going to bind these, these candrals, whether we could staple it into a brochure or anything.
Which was, we started talking about that with Amanda today, but we think we'd send it to her first, let her look at it, give her a better idea of what we're talking about, and then continue the conversation as the week goes on.
Yeah, good.
We can do what we can do, how we attach it to the guide, where we put it in the guide, that's critical as well. And then as critical to that is how we get it back, you know, is it post mail, is it, you know, what is, the option will be online, but for people who don't go online, you've got to give them an avenue to get it back to you, and it's got to be the least available possible, for the ones that are going to get back.
Well, just put a postage stamp in there, that most parks will keep track of.
Exactly right. So that's in the works, we, we've got that going, and we'll keep you updated as we, as we go forward, we'll find out about the online capability, I'm sure that's possible. The last thing I really have is, put my bed hat back on for a minute, I'd like to request the second June meeting, which I believe is June 27th, and deliver my annual BID report to this board. I usually do it the first June meeting, but I have to run it forward a little bit, so I won't be able to be here, but I might be here Monday, but it's like the fact. So if the 22nd is good, I'd like to set up for that.
Everybody noticed in terms of the Fox Project, Dennis is taking, will be taking the lead on it, if, be able to be the point person, if you have any questions, involve him.
I like to be bothered, no problem there. Does this have any questions for me? That's all I have. Thank you, Dennis.
These are your recorded presentations for the Main Street grant?
Okay.
Turned by copies.
Okay. And another thing we'll talk about.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
There's less rush on that.
Exactly.
Did I hear, did you see where that other grain information came through today?
I did, I followed over the mailing, mailing. We're going to get to work on that, probably with the, the project that's ahead of writer, Harville Shopping Center, in there. That's a nice template, I don't, I think it's on the latest one, so if you get something like that, it'll work. And marry it up with the grant, I mean, it's a win-win. We'll be working on that later in the week. Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. At first, I'll be just start and following up and congratulating Dennis on having the chamber for such a well-deserved honor. Unfortunately, I don't know if I'm going to make it back in time, I'm representing the chamber at the trades, Brooklyn Trade Show, but hopefully I'll get back in time, but everybody's in the chamber, very excited, and we all really enjoy working with Dennis, and that's a great job for the community.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you. And next, I wanted to just follow off, I know with the last meeting, we had a conversation about some incidents recently on Main Street, I wanted to thank the mayor and the co-enforcement director, Jim Burbidge, coming down to the restaurant committee, I really thought the conversation and the dialogue was excellent, I think there's a lot of good ideas that being thrown around, just a couple of things that we're very happy about is that there's real movement now that the restaurant committee will create a special fund that can be used to assist businesses that do, does have property damage, and I think, showing from the restaurant end of it, I think there was, in the chamber end of it, some excitement about the, that the village would consider maybe when people do do damage in our sentence, that they could add some community service time on Main Street, throw an orange vest on them, and help like, go out there and clean the streets, and maybe put a more visible face to who's doing it, and make everybody think twice about doing stuff like that again. And those were just a couple of things, I think there's a lot of great dialogue, I know this is going to be something ongoing, continuing, it's not something that's going to be solved and go away overnight, but, you know, certainly the cooperation between the village and the chamber makes me feel very confident that, you know, we're going to get as much of the handle on it as possible. Appreciate it. Next, and then I wanted to just go through some upcoming events for the chamber, this Saturday, very exciting, Saturday, April 18th, from 2 to 4, we have two grand, two ribbon cuttings and grand openings in one event. We have Seachem Dental Group and Seachem Eye Care, both opened up in offices across the hall from each other at 38 Oak Street, and they got to do, you know, do kind of a joint event, we'll do a separate ribbon cutting for each one, they're going to be putting out some light refreshments for everybody, and some other entertainment as well, so, you know, everybody from the community, we welcome, everybody come down and welcome these two wonderful businesses to our community.
What type of venues?
It's 2 to 4 this Saturday, the 18th. Following, Wednesday, April 22nd, another day that we all look forward to in the community, and that's our annual Eloise Stodenger Beautification fundraiser. As it has been in the past few years, this will be taking place at the Harbor Crab, on their wonderful Barefoot Princess vessel right next to them, and this does offer two opportunities, it does offer lunch seatings and dinner seatings, lunch between 11:30 and 3, or dinner between 5 and 9, and though my reach is mainly to chamber members, certainly this is something that everybody in the community is welcome to participate in, tickets are available at the chamber office, so if anybody just gives us a call, or reaches out through our website, or social media, we'll reserve tickets for you, it's always a great event, and all, you know, this money is a large chunk of what makes the plants and the plantings and a lot of the beautification projects that they do, memorial benches, archways, you know, it's probably one of the most active committees, and two or three people work very hard to do a lot of work, and so we need support there, please come out to the fundraiser. Now, following after that, the following week, Tuesday, April 28th, we're also excited at our next general membership meeting, it's going to be at St. Joseph's College, it's a breakfast meeting from 8 to 10, and we're very excited Congressman Lee Zeldin is going to be our guest speaker at this meeting, so it's a great opportunity for the community to get to meet our new congressman, you know, anybody's welcome, and there will be a free light breakfast served thanks to St. Joseph's College, and if anybody wants to attend, just register through the chamber office, and we'll certainly make the room for you. Following after that, the following week, well, next day, I should say, is Wednesday, April 29th, the Brookhaven Chamber of Commerce Coalition is holding their annual dinner. We're excited to do it in Patchogue this year, the last few years they've been over at the windows on the lake in Rockonkoma, now they're coming to our lake, they're coming to West Lake Inn at 6 o'clock, and at this event, every chamber gets to nominate a member of the year, that hopefully will be selected as the Brookhaven Chamber Member of the Year. So this year, we're excited, our member, our nominee for Member of the Year is James Skidmore. James is the manager over at Brickhouse Brewery, and as everybody knows, he's been the chairman now for the last couple of years of our Live After Five event, we were awarded Best on Long Island Street Festivals, and that was largely due to the hard work of James Skidmore, so well-deserved honor for him, everybody again is welcome, if anybody wants to get tickets to that event, again, please call the chamber office. I'm just looking ahead into the following month, something that we came across, that we found out is that the first week of May, May the 4th to the 8th, is National Small Business Week. So as a chamber, we felt it was very, we should definitely do something to commemorate that, so we have a couple of things that were, have planned for that week. First, for our members, we are creating a series of business seminars that's being hosted by Blazamac and co-sponsored by Drew Staples. Each morning, there'll be a special presentation on different techniques about improving businesses, from social media to sales techniques to financing, so if anybody is a business owner and wants to participate, again, call the chamber. Space is limited, it only holds about 60 people each morning, so if you are interested, please let us know. And then, for more for the general public, they celebrate Small Business Week, the Business Promotions Committee will be doing a special save your receipts endeavor, so what that means is that if you, anytime you make a purchase during that week at a chamber business, chamber member business, please save your receipts, collect them throughout the week, and we will draw a raffle, and that person selected can cash in his receipts up to $500. So it's a great way, a great week to do some shopping in Patchogue, save those receipts, and you might even get reimbursed for it as well. And also looking ahead, you know, I scan thank the Village Recreation, I know there's a couple of small housekeeping things we need to do for it, but May the 2nd is officially the annual Suffolk County Coalition Against Domestic Violence's Cause for a Cause Pet Expo and Pet Parade. We moved the location this year to Shorefront Park, really excited about that, and again, thank the Recreation Department for being so, working with us so well on that. You know, this is, this event always means a little bit more, more to me in that the very first meeting, as the executive director, I came here, the mayor directed them to me, and they became members, so it's nice to see that, this will be the third one, and it's, it's grown, and it continues. And I know we mentioned Suffolk County Marathon, the Sep... And I know we mentioned Suffolk County Marathon, September 13th, I noticed some issues, some things coming up on the agenda later about that today, but if everything goes through for approval tonight, we're excited to be hosting their first training run in anticipation of the Suffolk Marathon, that will be May the 7th, it'll start at Blue Point, the proposal is to start at Blue Point Brewery, go to Corey Beach and back, you know, if everything gets approved, certainly we encourage anybody who wants to participate in that race to look it up in the chamber or come on down.
David, what's that?
So, what is PYA?
It was just changed.
Yes, wasn't changed to?
No.
Today, so, what time is the door open at?
Now, the pet parade mess is 8 to 1 is what they have scheduled, I don't know what time that they do their thing, but, I mean, I don't know if they conflict that bad.
Right, the pet parade is on, is actually Shorefront Park, and the opening PYA is right at Wobau.
Make sure Jimmy knows, because he's going to have, that he knows that this too, because it's had to be two places.
Yep.
Well, I appreciate the notice about that, I'll try to let the organizers know to be wary of that, and I'm sure we could sit down and work out any conflicts.
They're going to be there first.
Exactly. So if anybody else has got any questions? Thank you very much, everyone, it's a great evening.
Obviously, deputy mayor, preview is in here, I'll give you, my only theory what I know is I had something, I think you'd be Friday night was back, the governor, Jay Zee, there on Saturday, I think, I think he'd be back on Sunday. A lot of stuff going on on Main Street, and Pat in the Palm this weekend.
I'll, okay.
Ready?
I gotta report for you.
I tried to think of a couple of more.
The permit for the bamboo removal at Thorburn Street came in today. The bamboo removal at Thorburn Street, that we saw it in about last, the, but anyway, the permits finally in DC, finally gave us the permit, so I'll be arranging some meetings there, we're going to get to work on that as soon as we can. Something I want to throw by the board, I spoke with the mayor a little bit about this morning, it's not on the agenda, remember about a month or two ago, we bought some signs for West Lake and Patchogue Lake, well, Patchogue Lake moment vandalized, so we had two, three weeks after we cleared up. The cost of it was $1,200, I don't know what they did, so I'm just throwing out to you guys to give some feedback to see if you think it's worth reinvesting. So I'm going to have to do it tonight, but if you want to think about it, talk about it, and the board or whatever, this month, we do a sign.
I will never understand, we have to sign it now. Never, I know.
Yeah, it makes absolutely no sense, excuse me? I just destroyed the sign when we got it, so it's left for the post, very discouraging because.
It was not salvageable.
And within weeks, I mean, that's not the Main Street drugs, I guess that's the World Patrol Kids, nothing but it, it makes no sense.
The Westlake.
Yeah, Westlake State, but they picked on Patchogue Lake, so, a little discouraging. I'm requesting approval to set a public hearing to consider installation of a stop sign at the intersection of Cedar Avenue and Campbell Street, we actually did approve this a while back, but I've heard some from some residents since then, so a lot of consideration to them, I think everybody deserves to be heard, so I'd like to set a public hearing for that.
Second.
Need 20, 22nd.
Six.
Whatever that.
Second meeting on that.
Right, 26, thank you.
Is that one worth it?
That's the Tuesday, I have to go on that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Requesting approval to award the bid for decorative crosswalks to Kings Park Industries and Corporation, the amount of $19,024 per square foot, at the recommendation of J.R. Holtzmark, crosswalks will be between $7,000 and $10,000 square feet, they were by far a little bit, I think we got three, and they were like really low, and so we had Holtzmark and check them out thoroughly, and make sure that we were getting a quality company, and we are, so that's a motion.
Yes, the crosswalks we're going to be doing are the ones that, the ones that the four corners, the ones that Tri-Tec put in, and we'll be putting them in various locations. We have Blabview, Jennings, Jennings down there, Gerard Church.
Yeah, there's about 20 of them.
There's about 20 of them, we're going to be putting around the villages, so. Yeah, a couple down by the parks.
Yeah, kind of the main street is going to kind of get crap to the villages with these crosswalks.
That's a good, that would be really true. Some of them, some of the funding of that will come out of the grant for the ones that are around the parks, the ones that are on Terry Street will come out of a grant that we've gotten, of course, five, six years ago, because Terry Street's going to be repaid, handicap ramps, and from those handicap ramps, we're going to put in the crosswalks.
Yeah, I think the handicap ramps are done, it's another side. And then the theater crosswalk, which is a whole other, yeah, that's what I figured, yeah. So, okay, so that's a motion.
Second.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you. Requesting approval to access 2,003 Dodge Caravan from the GPW in John Yar.
Second.
All right. Karen. What's happening? That dude's having all vehicles, for us to get rid of it, we have them a resolution to access it.
Correct.
It was actually up for auction two or three times, but.
Yeah, we can't get rid of it.
One, one. Motion.
All right.
Requesting approval to hire Thermotech Combustion to provide and install a 12,000 BTU air handler for the code office, at a cost not to exceed $6,400, as you know, since we did the additions here, we have had some heating and AC issues, especially back in the court section, so, this is a split area unit, or a system, which should resolve that one, that's a motion.
Second.
Second.
All right.
Thank you. Requesting approval to hire Diamond Industries to supply and install a sewer system manhole at 70 North Ocean Avenue, at a cost not to exceed $4,500.
Second.
All right.
Requesting approval to hire Ennis Flint to supply thermoplast numbers for installation to the on-screen parking spaces, at a cost not to exceed seven grand, you can see that some of the paint's stuck a little bit.
I know, you can't tell when it's fine or.
Yeah, some of them, if you didn't have, that's good that we have on the curb, because the ones in the street you can't really see, so we're going to try these thermoplasts and hope that, you know.
Yeah, I was just trying.
Motion.
Second.
And while I'm at it, Brian, can I do a, by compending, we're also looking to, as you know, several weeks ago, we had some conversation about the four corners, and we want to use some thermoplast numbers on the sidewalks, pedestrians remind them to push the button, crosswalk, but we're checking it out to make sure that Ennis Flint is the sole contractor of that, so kind of get like approval for that now, until we find out whether or not they are.
Sure, pending, pending if they're the only supplier of that.
Yeah, we're checking that out, we'll see, so that would be a request, again, for Ennis Flint to supply thermoplast lettering to be installed on the sidewalks at the four corners.
Second.
All right.
And Lori, I know, we're on that subject, I was, I'm talking about, we're on that subject, we did meet with Johnson Electric again, at the four corners, after the last meeting, we stood there with them, it's not listening, we have to be patient, push the button, it will work, right? But we just have to wait it out, it's got to be, and the timing is right in the crosswalks, but it's just kind of like a long walk. To change some of the lighting, to change those, to change the timing of the lights, and may have traffic issues as well, but they do work, we just have to stand there and.
But people don't.
I know, I know.
And if they don't know to push the button, they wind up jaywalking.
It's like, we'll give you patience, and you want right now, you know, we have to learn, we take them, wait it out. Requesting approval to hire Brian McCaffrey to provide mechanical civil engineering consulting services to the village, at a cost not to exceed $5,000.
Motion.
Second.
All right.
I think that's, oh, look at this, I have another page.
You have to, you have to.
Excuse me?
I think you need to switch the.
Which one?
Done.
There we go.
I'm sorry. The number two and number four.
Two and four down.
Done.
Two and four, number 11, yes. I'm using my old agenda, because that's the one I screw the notes on. Requesting approval to execute a contract with Johnson Electric to provide traffic signal maintenance at a cost of $840 per month for the 2015-2016 fiscal year.
Motion.
Second.
All right.
Request approval to appoint John Government Sanitation Lead Van, effective March 30, 2015.
Motion.
All right.
Request approval to hire PJ Sarge and Vincent Palumbo as seasonal laborers at 10:75 an hour, effective June 1, 2015.
Motion.
All right.
All right.
Request approval for relay for life to paint the town purple, and to hang a banner on Main Street to promote Dairy Van, kickoff date is Monday, 27th. Motion.
Second.
All right. Joe, the next three, we're going to approve tonight, they're both, depending if they go through, but before we be able to act on them, we need to get the contract numbers.
Yeah, I know, Brian and I spoke about that, we would be searching that as well, I was hoping to have them before tonight, so we can, we can approve them pending that.
Yeah, pending that, that they are, or do you get it, the county, or whether or contract.
Okay, we're going to be required to provide the contract numbers for all these kinds of bids from going in, and I was hoping to have that ready tonight.
Yeah.
Requesting approval for Rosemont and Millen Pave, South Ocean Avenue, Thunder River Track, south to Laurel Street, as well as Pearl Street and Boil Lane, at a cost not to exceed $180,000, the portion from Laurel Street south will be done with silver money, we have several different funding sources for these, a lot of paving jobs that we're dealing with, as I may have stopped explaining before, so some of these things appear broken up, but tonight, we're just requesting approval for Rosemont and the river to Laurel Street.
Do the Laurel.
Okay, also requesting approval for Rosemont, you're getting tired of somebody talking about that.
Okay.
Requesting approval for Rosemont and Millen Pave, Dane Street, Schroeder Lane, Boil Lane, and the Full Sisters Parking Lot, at a cost not to exceed 64 grand, and I'm also requesting approval for Rosemont and Millen Pave, various locations, to prepare for the installation of the decorative crosswalks, at a cost not to exceed 76 grand, those crosswalks that we approved earlier have to be done in relatively fresh asphalt, so Rosemont's going to have to come, do the paving for that section, then we can back into the crosswalk. Those are all motions.
Second.
All right. Interesting thing on the South Ocean Avenue one, the price of fuel going down?
Yeah.
We saved $26,000.
Yeah, we did, yeah, we did, we got a low price, and the original, we got to give it to them when we first started the whole project, and yeah, it's a price of $26,000.
26.
So, they're 22.
Take it.
Okay, trustee, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, but I don't have anything to say.
Yeah.
Good evening, everybody, I have a couple more things, just want to give you an update on some of artistic happenings around town. I'll start with the crosswalk for the library, the Patchogue Arts Council put out what we call a poll for artists, also submitted it to several of the other arts councils, it went out in the newsletter, it went out onto other arts council's websites, and submissions have been coming in, I haven't looked at any in the app, but we do have submissions, so artists have until the end of the month to email info@patchoguearts with their submission and use the word crosswalk in the subject line.
This is the.
This is the library.
The library theater crosswalk, they do, they will do a decorative one, in other words, you could put a knife and a fork, and a shopping bag, and masks, and do all sorts of things.
If you Google the Baltimore Arts District, you can see what was done down there, they have a zipper being opened, they have piano keys, I mean, there's certain criteria, there's still the big banner on the sides, and it's got to be a fairly graphic design, but they have some pretty cool stuff in their arts district.
Certain size, also.
Certain size, yeah, yeah, so we put all that criteria, and we got that information out, out in the email blast and the newsletters, so.
When that's done, that, the lighting also will be put in that crosswalk at the same time.
Yeah, that would be nice.
So be able to hit a button, the crosswalk will light up, as you go, of course.
And Dave Rogers.
Directly in Patchogue.
I sent it to him directly, he was very excited about it. Let's see, and then the long-awaited movie that's been out, and then I apparently they recalled it because they needed to make some edits, Woman in Gold is the name of the movie about the famous painting by Gustav Klint, and the story behind that painting and its history, and how it was stolen from the family, it's a, it's a well-known story. That movie is opening Friday at Plazamac.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
The seats are great.
The new seats, yeah.
Are they in?
Yeah, the new seats are in.
You could fall asleep.
I don't need that when I see a movie, I need a nice hard seat. And then at Patchogue Arts Council, there'll be a new exhibit going up on May 2nd called Linear Constructions, curated by none other than me, my first time curating an exhibit for the Patchogue Arts Council, there'll be some interesting use of line with sculptures and paintings, three different artists. There will be a reception that night, May 2nd, which is a Saturday from 5 to 7 p.m., so come on down, I'll send you a calendar reminder.
No, I'm on the.
Are you going to be away?
I'm, yeah, Saturday.
Oh, well, I'll give you a personal tour. And then I understand that, Joe, you're still CDA, you're CDA, right? So Marion emailed me today, she's finalizing the contract with the artist who's going to be doing the mural on the Chinese restaurant, the Patchogue Arts Council is involved in that selection, so we should see that mural getting started very soon, and the mural and the road walkway, as soon as the weather warms up a little bit, those artists are itching to get out there and get that finished, so we should see some action there as well. And I think that's all happened this evening.
I had a go for my to do, you have to clear you about that door, if there's anything to do.
Yeah, he said that that door is really too thin, it's almost just like paper, thin rust, and they know it, we really should just, maybe Dennis can get them to replace the door. I'm mystery correct.
Dennis, the door, that side door at Stanley's?
He talked to them about it.
At one point, we thought we could just put the sheet now on it, the door's not there, so that's not going to work, but I didn't know the same way through. I'll leave Shannon alone, see what, see them break again.
Yeah, because the artist would paint right over the door, but the condition is in, they're filling around it, which is silly.
Jack, actually, Dave Rogers came to my office today just about to ask that issue, he was suggesting the chamber, he puts an information key ass five in front of that door, you know, I said I would certainly consider it, if everybody else felt the same, that was his suggestion, I didn't vote about it until he came in, so certainly, I'm sure we've participated, if that's something you.
Is that a working door again, David? I don't remember.
He said, no, I mean, I need to ask Andy that, when I talked to David, I brought that up, and he says, as far as he knows, it's not a working, working door, but I haven't confirmed that with business.
All right, well, we can talk about this, we can take this off.
I just want to make a quick comment about Lori and the Arts Council, congratulations as the new president of the Patchogue Arts Council.
Oh, thank you, yeah, I took on the role of president again, somebody has to do it.
And they are, they have become a real force in our community. Last fiscal year, they raised about $27,000, that's a year ago, last year, they raised $94,000.
And you can tell that you are very close to the treasurer.
The treasurer, yeah. I helped to do the tax returns.
We do need that money to pay the bills, so.
Yeah.
It's all good.
But, you know, you also sponsor things like.
Like Pacman, yeah, which we're in early, early planning stages. Now that I'm over my cold. All right, that's all I have, oh, no, I do, I have, I have something else, I have a request approval to hire L.K. McLean Associates to provide assistance with site plan and secret review for the proposed project at Campbell Street and our dial lane, at a cost not to exceed $17,610.
Second, just a comment on that motion, when we do that within our code, we are allowed to charge back the applicant, so this $17,610 is a compilation of, whether it's a traffic report, an environmental report, whatever it may be, will come out of that, and then there will be a charge back to the applicant, so that is not a $17,000 charge, it comes[1750.04] will come out of that and then there will be a charge back to the applicant. So that is not a seventeen thousand dollar charge. It comes to the village, it goes to the applicant.
Correct.
Second. Favor? Okay.
Uh, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, trustees, rine and guests. Today I got an email. As you know, we've, uh, we've concentrated on not only adding play equipment for children and dispense children, we've also added equipment for adults. And today I got an email, which was a pleasure to read. It's Dear Commissioner Hilton, I wanted to thank you and your staff for installing the outdoor exercise quizz in Shortfront Park. I was able to use it this weekend while my son was on the playground and I had a great time. The revitalization of the park has been a great asset to our community and something that Patchogue residents should be proud of. I, I was very proud to get this email and, uh, just wanted to share it with y'all. We're gearing up, gearing where the parks are looking great, everything's turning green finally, and, uh, we're looking forward to the season coming up. First on my agenda is the, Mr. Mayor, request approval authorizing the execution of an agreement with Cornell Rothschild to provide a landscape master plan for the village's parks at a cost not to exceed ninety thousand dollars. As Dennis explained, we spent most of the day last week walking the park with two very professional architects, landscape architects, who had done the plan for Greenport and also for the Port Jefferson Harbor revitalization. Came up with some great ideas that none of us had thought of, and, uh, also came up with some good ideas as to how to utilize what we already have. My particular interest in, in this plan is to shore up the shoreline, of which they, we discussed at great length. An engineer from VHB met us down there and he had some good ideas as far as breaking up the impact from the storms that tend to render most of Shortfront Park landscapeless and, uh, for lack of a better word, uh, which is something that hopefully will go away with this new project. So, Mr. Mayor, that was a, a motion to authorize an agreement with Cornell Rothschild.
Second. Favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Just a quick comment.
Yeah.
I highly recommend that anyone who wants to see the work that these guys do, just look them up on the internet. They are, they gotta be one of the premier park designers, certainly in the United States.
If I, if I could speak to that, my sister looks up in peak skill and then redid the whole waterfront there, and they have an incredible sculpture component to waterfront. It's just amazing. The park there is really beautiful. Very nice.
Yeah, her portfolio is something to be proud of.
The funder for this, Patrick, well, part of our getting this grant is that we have a master plan, and it's done not, not to their satisfaction, but to our satisfaction. It's good to have somebody there that, that you say is a business.
Absolutely. Uh, Mr. Mayor, request approval authorizing the execution of an agreement with VHB Engineering and Landscape Architecture to provide services related to the development of plans for the improvements at Village Parks at a cost not to exceed ten thousand dollars. This was, these were gentlemen that we met down at the park along with Cornell Rothschild, who are bringing the engineering aspect to this project. They've done a tremendous amount of work on the South Shore, and, uh, both of these costs to me are, are fantastic price. Taking into consideration the professionalism that we have brought to, to the village, and, uh, that's a motion.
Favor?
Aye.
Um, Mr. Mayor, request approval for the United Veterans Organization of Patchogue to hold the annual Memorial Day Parade on Memorial Day, Monday, May twenty-fifth, beginning at eleven. Motion?
Second.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Request approval to hire dock security staff at the rate of ten dollars an hour, effective May first, twenty-fifteen. You have the, the attached list.
Motion?
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Request approval to hold to add four new programs to the twenty-fifteen summer program. Now, these programs are slightly unusual, but apparently they're very popular. As you know, we, or you know, there's no reason why you wouldn't know, but we.
I don't know.
We go through all, all the brochures, all the programs of all the Fox Park in New York State that's provided to us through a service, and we try to pick up on some of their most popular programs that we don't offer, uh, one of them being body blasting boot camp. Uh, this is something that's very popular with the younger generation. Village Fit with a Boat Yoga Flair, something that should go very well. We've been doing Cheerio, the senior program at three A. It's done very well. Girls Softball Skills and Drills Clinic. This is, uh, something that has been asked for, for a while, and we finally have been able to find it. A reasonable teacher, and guided morning meditations on the beach. No further explanation. That's a motion.
Actually, you could do the, the way it's scheduled. You could do.
Body blasting.
You could do body blasting. Yo, the yoga combined. Oh, yeah.
That would be great.
The motion, second?
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Request approval for flows on the go and Mr. Solfi with the vendors at the Boss for a Cause event at Shortfront Park on Saturday, May second, from nine A.M. to one P.M. That's a motion.
Yes, second, yes, stop any of the vendors, of course.
Correct. Who are the vendors, whatever process is there.
Take it, favor?
Second. Aye.
And you also have to have, uh, the department. What did they think?
Yeah, but, but just start that, see what I mean.
I think Mr. Solfi probably already has one.
And that's a false. All right, that's fifth. We will do that. We're going on?
Yeah.
Request approval at Thursday, July sixteenth, as an additional date for the previously approved Great South Bay Music Festival, which will be held now July sixteenth to July nineteenth. Uh, this is a, uh, additional day that promoter has asked for, to do a soft evening. Uh, we've asked them to, not, to have their, some of the normal.
They, they will have the vendors.
Right.
That's a small two vendors, gonna be a vendors.
How like, are they gonna go on the first thing?
For music to attack.
It's a, for the young kids, yeah. Fifteen, sixteen years old, so.
Motion?
Second.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Request approval for the Greater Long Island Running Company to hold a training run on Thursday, May seventh, at six thirty P.M., starting and ending at Blue Point Brewery. This is a training run for the Long Island Marathon. Uh, it's, there will be no road closures. They're gonna be, what we're gonna do is we're gonna cone off the East Side River Avenue, uh, about a five-foot lane. It's a, it's a non-timed run. There will be, uh, no time taken, so they're not, they're gonna, supposedly they're gonna stop at the stop signs and yield to traffic. Despite that, uh, we're gonna cone off the whole length of River Avenue on the east side from Division to Weeks, and it should, there will be parking at the Double Deck, um, and Tiki and Brewery. We've had several meetings about this. The fifth precinct is gonna do whatever they ask them to do, um, and I'm confident that it's gonna go well. It's not extremely popular in my book, but.
It is what it is.
It is what it is.
It's judged by the county executive.
Right, it's judged by, uh, the executive board, and we're also charging them five hundred dollars, which is the moment, right, the fee. It's a motion.
That's just, uh, public safety, right?
Yes.
Motion, second. Favor?
Aye.
Okay.
That's all I have for tonight.
Any other comments for the board?
Just your public, maybe for my everybody to watch the budget here, budget here tomorrow night at six o'clock, and hope to be heard. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, trustees. Um, crossing my fingers that for the last two weeks, there has been no news day supplement papers thrown around the village. Are you keeping secrets from me, Brian?
You'd be first on my list if I found out about that.
Two weeks, and it's great. Now for some nagging. Um, sorry. You have this focus on the parks, and I thought it originally was gonna say neighborhoods also.
Yep.
So I'd like to speak about some of my longtime nagging, uh, fireman's arch patch, uh, south. Maybe that could be part of the parks, get rid of that thing. The fireworks.
Your tree arch. I, I asked them about getting rid of it. They, they will not get rid of it.
Do they own the property?
That's a discussion I will have.
Yeah, I've talked to Carter a couple of times and a couple of guys have made. It's dedicated to somebody and they wanna keep it as a memorial.
Well, they should make it look bad.
Well, they should. You're right. I've been back and forth with them on that. They've, they've been promising to paint it. I don't know how long.
I've talked to Carter about it. Because it's a mess.
It, it is, I know.
They're gonna straighten it out the little street and now we're changing it.
Yeah.
We'll get to Lincoln Street.
Now, um, soon science, Paul, you'll be, I took you for a ride, and as far as I'm concerned, it'd be a simple, simple thing to do to spruce up the neighborhoods, you know, it's.
Even like the, the comments, I mentioned that to Joe too, the camaraderie and some of the, just the, the street signs themselves are a mess.
But I mean, there's some of the ones that really don't need to be there, and, uh, I mean, there's the ones by Bravo on that street there. There's a stop sign and a dead-end sign. It's a driveway. It has a name, uh, but.
But are those legal signs? I wondered the same thing recently when they called that a Bravo, said, who, who stops where? It's like.
It is a driveway.
But it, but it, it's a, it's a village right of way.
Take the signs away. They belong to the village. But I say, the villages filled with these signs, and I just showed you, you know, and, uh, so simple to get rid of so many of them, and it's gonna be a great improvement, and very little cost. And then there's the garbage. We have an inappropriate, some people have mattresses and box springs right down from their house, Laurie. It's been there since Sunday. Mattress and box spring a couple houses down.
Oh, past me. I'm not that way, okay.
And, uh, I just happened to take a few pictures. I'll just. North Ocean Avenue, you won't get, Easter Sunday, it's a dump. Cedar Avenue, that's the mattresses. Uh, North Ocean Avenue, stuff was put out on Sunday. It won't be picked up till at least tomorrow.
Yeah, it's always been an issue that people who have weekends off can't get it out during the week because they're, they're up Saturday and Sunday.
There is, there is, uh, we went, we've been through this before. There is, they can't put it out more than one day before it's gonna be picked up.
Correct, but I've always. And I just understand that people are, you know, they do, they lose it, they go to work.
Well, well, in my eyes, it's not the residents as much as the landlords.
The landlords.
Those are the ones.
It's the multifamilies, it's right.
Well, it's, uh, it's a fiction, it's right.
No, it's.
I don't.
Village Home.
Done, and I understand exactly what you said, and I know exactly what the process is, but sometimes there are circumstances I, I agree with, and, uh, okay, no, getting around it is giving violations.
Or notices, or notices. The word can spread and say, hey, you know, they're a little serious about this, because you drive around any street.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, there's bags, there's big piles of stuff. It looks like hell.
There you go.
I'll, you, you've just enough said.
Get the job.
Easter Sunday. Oh, thank you for me. So, uh, yeah, once a while I'll try, but, uh, as I say, this weekend was bad. It's got spring cleaning. Crack remains Saturdays, Sundays, and Mondays. There should be nothing. And then, and then Wednesday you put out all the cracks. I'm looking out for the neighbors.
I know you are. I appreciate it, yeah.
Sorry, give you one second later, and Gloria, just one second. Anyone else? Mark? Mark Siegel from Blum, and like he just said, I have, it's, it's as stupid as all saying, but it's, um, like old Jack about three weeks ago. The, the person that calls three, dump in the garbage, white bags, on Saturday and then Sunday, and we have, you know, it's, in other words, they're at their garbage can, and why they can't have these guy who owns the building can't lease, like we did, we built and leased the property behind, you know, the, the, the behind us garbage can, so a bunch of us all use it. But can he do it? Because he gets pissed, the, uh, restaurant people get pissed because they try to use their garbage. So I'm just saying, it looks terrible. I have a picture if you wanna see it. Yeah, so, I mean.
Is it a second floor business, what kind?
No, this is, I, I think it's the, uh, it looks like the beauty parlor. Uh, I, I, she, she throws her garbage in here instead of taking it home, throwing in her own garbage.
No, this is a crossroom.
Yeah.
I've noticed on the weekends walking in that stretch that one of the garbage.
Yes, a record treatment, white bags, all Saturday and Sunday, and it's, you know, take it home, you know, you don't, you know, you don't pay the village, you know, with garbage to go.
Is that illegal for us?
Yeah, that, you can't dispose of commercial garbage in a, in a street.
Every weekend, same thing.
You know?
That's a joke, that's a, that's an unexpected brand new business. That's an unexpected.
Tell the builder on a Saturday afternoon or a Sunday morning.
Yep.
Hope the same.
Pull the bag. Pull out of there.
Why should we have to call a village, uh, garbage man and come pick it up Sunday morning?
We'll, we'll address it. We'll, why don't you just give an order, we'll give a, uh, order of remedy on that.
Again, public safety, you gotta take, take.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Maybe the bags where there is anything with addresses and.
Just give an order of remedy for their, for their information of relief, they can, that's the one.
But if you open up, it isn't electric bill or.
That's a good prosecution. I think that would do that.
And lady, yes, would you be for Jana?
Seems to be a garbage discussion night. Um, I live over at sixteen Silver Street, um, I'm a tenant at sixteen Silver Street. My landlord is Ed Loper.
Uh, name and address please, I have my.
Judy Pepinell, sixteen Silver Street, Patchogue Village. Um, I rent the house. My landlord is Ed Loper. He has been phenomenal in keeping it clean. We have a wonderful set of strip stores next to us. There's two landlords that own that building. There's the Sunny Spa and El Capitan. That's one landlord, gentleman, two gentlemen that agree, um, and they have just been presenting, not from you guys, but you're affiliated with the problems with the garbage and the dumping in that location. But Southern County just sent something threatening to do all the legal ramifications of something that's not even his issue. The landlord that owns it, I do not know how to find this information, the landlord that owns the hair salon and the bodega. Allow the dumpster in the back corner, the parking lot, and the crack, and that's as nice a way as I can put it. That comes up into my backyard, on my side of my house, because my house is here. The back entrance is here to this, this, uh, location. I've made complaints regarding the filth. I've made complaints regarding the bodega. Uh, I've called the village, the, the, the safety guys. They've been great. I call up, I call up at three o'clock in the morning, two o'clock, I'm, I'm sorry Judy, it's hollow Judy, what's that? They're at it again. They come over. The, the guys have been, the safety guys have been phenomenal. Not gonna deny that. But the filth, the urination and other body functions that go on behind that dumpster, I mean, I went and took pictures today, I mean, I'm not gonna pass you my phone, but I'm gonna email them out to you guys so you can see what I'm talking about. There are two different landlords. There are two different landlords. One that cares. And they just rip down all the bamboo. They come and do spring cleanups, every year fall cleanups. They come out, they have a guy come up, sweep the sidewalk, sweep the back block. Lemon Tree is part of the bad landlord. And it's not Lemon Tree because that's where I go to get my haircut. And they have vomit, condoms, and other things in front of their building when they wake up in the morning. It is atrocious. Now, I'm, I'm part of the, um, Maple Avenue, um, Neighborhood Watch. We're dealing with the fifth precinct with this issue. It's a pretty complex issue. But when we're speaking about garbage, let me tell you, that dumpster, don't go near it on a nice summer day in a warm spell because it's wet. And not everybody uses the dumpster. There is businesses that put garbage pails like I have in my house behind the door of their establishment and put their garbage out, or in the white beds. Back to the gentleman just said about white garbage beds. What's at the back door? The raccoons love it, the cats adore it, and the dogs are having a party. Not to mention the crows and the seagulls. So, we do have a problem and, and I understand. It's, you don't want garbage in the front. My neighbor emptied their basement and put stuff out on Saturday before Easter. And I was like, please, really? We just did all this cleanup and they just put the stuff along the side there so it will be easier to shift it to the front. But the problem is rogue landlords, as you had just said. And I live in a house that is rental. But my landlord and my son, thank God I got a six foot five son, does all the cleaning. He does out there the work. So it's being taken care of, but the rogue landlords are a problem. And their garbage is coming into my yard, their garbage is going into the streets, not to mention the filth. A funny example, and it's nauseating, was found in the back of the buildings today. It was a pair of underpants with human pieces in it. I'm trying to be as nice as I can. That's a standard operating procedure.
Well, so what about the business owners? I mean, they have to have some partners. It can't just be the landlords. I mean, they're running businesses and this is how they're operating?
I've gotten nothing, no reaction from Sunny Spa except just some research on who they are. Uh, fifth precinct is involved with who they are.
I was wondering about that actually today when I drove by.
Do you want to talk? We'll talk later. I can say a whole lot about what goes on over there. And it's not something I really want to go into, except it's not something that's supposed to be happening in a public location. I've never known a foot salon to be open at ten o'clock at night on a Sunday. And that's, I mean, everyone's snickers here and snickers. That's basically what goes on there. And the precinct, fifth precinct is involved with this. So this is not, I'm not saying it's your fault, you're out of it. But it's.
Some of it is something that we should have control. Let's talk to Joe Randy and.
Yeah, Joe's been back. Joe from, from.
Yeah, he's in your, he's in your neighborhood.
He's a, he's a, I'm, I'm a committee man. That's why. And I'm, I'm, I'm standing here today, standing up for the Realtor. Who is, again, I'm ED twenty-three. That's my committee. And this guy is, is so kind. He goes to my house, he knocks on the door. He said, I'm going to have a lot of garbage. I don't want to put it in price. We'll dark, you know, you'll put the bags out tonight. The other stuff, just put it along the side and we'll push it out front. He goes, I don't want to be rude. I don't want to be.
Can't they get garbage cans?
Well, this is for the lawn, the lawn cleanup, for the lawn. It's a spring cleanup. And I said, just put it over here and we'll make sure we push it out front. That's not a problem. It's a spring cleanup thing, so that's different. But they don't put any other garbage out there. The landlord is, he comes with a garbage bag. He picks up stuff. That's how he is.
I'm concerned about the one that dumped it. We need to find out how many violations we've given them.
They got a truck tire. I can show you a picture right now. They got a truck tire. They got other stuff. They got strollers. It's all of it.
What I want to do is I want to begin to build the record, our record.
Yeah.
Get them into court here. And because of fines on those, worth a thousand dollars for violation, right?
Yep. More than that, actually. Yes, true.
They, by the way, they were told by you guys to come down last year to clean up their portion of the, the meridian between the house with the bamboo. Not a damn thing has been done. It's still all over there, so.
So, uh, do you know, uh, the address for?
Yeah, one twenty-three, I'm sorry, one twenty-three, uh, Route one twelve. One twenty-five is, um, one twenty-five Route one twelve is the good guy. And that is, don't go by the building, the property owner is, uh, El Capitan and Sunny Spa. That's, those are the, that's the landlord that cares and is out there constantly.
He's taking, because El Capitan of employees.
Yeah, well, El Capitan is a whole other subject.
Yeah, but, but that's.
He's the landlord that owns El Capitan and Sunny Spa. And it used to be the signer, uh, the sign store. Used to be sign on the one. It's an address, so. Uh, but yeah, it's.
One twenty-three is the offender.
One twenty-three, the landlord of one twenty-three is the offender. That's the one.
And that's where we go. And I want to go with violations.
Yeah.
Straight, straight to violations, straight to getting in court.
Yeah. The noise, the, the other night, twelve fifteen P M. They were out with a blower cleaning the parking lot. I called up and I said, um, is that noise ordinance about blowers at twelve fifteen? And they're like, uh, yeah, what do you mean? I said, could you just, and they, they were just out there just cleaning the parking lot. No questions asked. I mean, that's what you do.
We'll get your attention and you. I don't know, fine.
Come around all their cages. I mean, uh, it's, the food is good in there, but the clientele that comes in, they, and they hang out in the parking lot. There's beers all along the back. I mean, tomorrow I will send you a lot of emails. You'll be able to see the pictures. Uh, the vulgar stuff has been removed because that's not left there. But there's some creative things in the parking lot as well and in my yard. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Next one for garbage?
Another lady? Yes.
My name is Joan Lawler. I live at thirty Wiggins Avenue in Patchogue.
Joan, I'm sorry, your last name again?
Lawler.
Law, L A W L R. Thank you.
And, um, about three and a half weeks ago, uh, the street light in front of my next door neighbor's house went out. And I called, um, information to get the number for the village DPW. I was given a number. I called and it was to code enforcement. And I said to the guy, I'm sorry, I have the wrong number. He goes, what are you, what are you going to do? I says, well, my street light next door in front of the house has gone out and I wanted to call and report it. He said, oh, not a problem. I'll take the information and I'll, you know, get that through. That's not a problem. Um, fast forward to three weeks later, um, it's still not done. Now, I do understand, uh, but I didn't, I got a message from the, uh, Jodina thing, say that?
Jodina?
Yeah, uh, and I understand that there's a waitlist and I understand that there, you know, you said that there's a part-time electrician who is responsible for all the streetlights in the village. Um, but I also looked at the tentative budget and I saw that it's going to be going from fifteen thousand to thirty thousand for that electrician. My question is, is that because he's going part to full time? From part-time to full time?
We've added some hours to it specifically for what the issues you're talking about. You know, um, Joe, let's, what was he at this?
Thirty Wiggins Avenue.
I live at thirty Wiggins. The street light is at tw- in front of twenty-seven. I mean, and the problem is, is last year I had a truck, my, my S U V and my car vandalized. And I called the precinct and they came and they took a report. Um, the summary, and I've now got cameras in front of my, you know, on my, attached to my house after that occurred. Um, I'm right around the corner from South Ocean. So if you take South Ocean to Carmen and then that's Wiggins. And there's all kinds of people walking in the night and that.
Anyone through a couple incidences over there about a year ago?
Yes, and it's, it's been an issue. And I'm seriously concerned because I have neighbors that's been away, uh, you know, and their lights are all off. And they've been gone for a couple of months. They're vacationing or whatever. And I just wanted to know, how is this going to be addressed with the budget? Is it because the person is going from part-time to full time? Because that's a lot of money, fifteen thousand, just to throw to part-time.
Because of issues as you're speaking about, it's the addition of hours and possibly adding something to that little segment. So let me take care of it. We'll get you, you like taking care of.
Your neighbor be twenty-eight, twenty-eight probably. Your neighbor's house will probably be twenty-eight, right? Ten number thirty?
Thirty, uh, I think it's.
You said twenty-seven. I'm just.
Yeah, I think it's right next door, um, to my house. But like Sam, just concerned about it. And when I saw the budget, I, I just didn't understand the whole thing.
Let me, let me take care of it.
Thank you.
Does he look to you?
Just to keep you focused on garbage. Um, I noticed, I noticed last year too, that around this time of year, people, you know, they wreck up the leaves and they have garden reviews. Now, on our street, they pick it up on Thursday, but people are putting it out on Sunday. Um, and, you know, just the paper bags, it's not so bad, but it's the plaque. Looks terrible. But, you know, our sanitation guys, because they want to be good guys and they are good guys, by the way, pick it up. So if it's being picked up on Monday, people will continue to put it out on Sunday or Saturday instead of waiting for Wednesday night.
And I, like I said, I think that some of it is, I, we're a blue collar community. You got people working late in the afternoon, late at night. And I can understand why they put it out on, on Sundays. And I, I don't, it doesn't negate the issue that the, the code doesn't negate the issue that it doesn't look great. But I can understand.
Well, the other reason is if you have a large item, sometimes depending if you're old or if you're alone, you need. What is speaking about me? I love mattress out.
More expensive stuff I have in my garage than I can get out.
But if you're old, you know, the person who can help you pull it out may only be around on the weekend. But, you know, I just want to say, the sanitation guys meaning to be helpful are probably encouraging people not to work in the cold.
Yeah. Thank you. Mr. Kemp.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and trustees. Richard Kemp, Jennings Avenue. Mr. Mayor, regarding garbage. This has been the worst winter in thirty years. We've had continuous snow on the ground from about January twenty-seventh to March tenth, thereabouts.
Hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars worth removed, it was.
All right. Uh, I did complain that my garbage was not being picked up. And I asked you, what do you want me to do to help the situation? Put the cans out near the curb? And you said, yes, do that. I did that on recycle day. I put two recycled cans, green cans, five feet in my driveway and nobody picked them up. This is your guys. I called the highway department and they sent somebody up. And I said to the guy, what is the problem? He said to me, well, you know, you're supposed to put them out at the street. I said, they're five feet in my driveway. It's all plowed out, all clear. And I don't understand why your guys didn't pick them up, but this is your guys. Now, I do also notice that on, if you're on North Ocean Avenue, no one puts their cans at curb side because there is so much traffic and so much wind from the cars that they do put their cans in their driveway and they do pick them up.
Mr. Kemp, you're a hundred percent sure you had the right one, right? The right day. It wasn't paper day and a can day. That kind of mix up. Is that possible maybe or?
They, they never touched the cans. They never even came on my props.
Now, my question was, are you a hundred percent certain they put a paper out on a can day? Could it be possible to mix up that paper they can?
Well, he took them. Whatever. I mean, he didn't, he didn't argue with me. I mean, uh, I mean, uh. But at, at any rate, uh, this is your guys, not me, your guys.
I'm telling you, they were extremely hard. You should spend a day in trouble. If you wanted, if you wanted to have a tough job, do what they do.
Okay.
There's no excuse for not picking up your garbage, but I respect every one of my guys. The amount of work they do, the type of work they do. You figure that, that they're trudging up every driveway, taking fat, the minimum fifty pound on their shoulders. And we have forty-two hundred residents in those buildings.
Yeah.
And so that happens. Every other day, twenty-one hundred times.
All right, well, that was at least the second time in the winter.
And like I said, we, and you said, it was a horrible winter.
Right.
So you give a, give a little break on that, okay?
I said, my driveway was dug out, plowed, the cans were clearly.
Mr. Kemp, I'm not here to debate with you because I didn't see it. I wasn't there for it. I'm just saying to you, the, the circumstances are the circumstances.
All right. Uh, next matter. There is currently an application for a restaurant on the Patchogue River.
Yes.
That is a German.
Yes.
I have asked you at least two times to consider enacting some type of, um, moratorium, which you have flatly denied. An outspoken attorney.
Excuse me, our village attorney.
Yes.
He's not outspoken. He's, he answers when it's directed to and when I question him.
And whenever he feels like.
Excuse me. If you keep it up, Mr. Kemp, I'm going to ask you to please sit down. If, if your intention here is to attack members of this board or members of my staff in any way, shape, or form, I'm going to ask you to please sit down.
I speak the truth.
No, you don't.
The minutes will ban me out.
Please sit down. Thank you. Any other comment? Bojack?
John Bojack, E K, Madison Street. Just a couple of quick questions. The grant that the village is getting, um, is that one million or five million though?
Five.
Five, all right. That's one question. Uh, the, um.
A piece of that also, just so you know, will be used for the, the new seats that we're getting in the theater.
All of it?
Yeah. In fact, this, by this time of year, there should be new seats. Um, quite a bit of work, probably about a million dollars worth of work is going to be done.
So is it more than just the parks now?
That's, that's the only thing that will be not in the parks. What if, when I spoke to the benefactor, what I had said to him is that I want to do things that have a direct cost effect on the resident. And for the seats, a little bit of indirect cost effect. And we've increased to where we're getting now a dollar a ticket for the tickets, but I didn't want to use that, that funding for that. And the same thing with the parks. So all of this is going towards those things that directly affect the resident's aspect.
Okay, so thanks for answering that question. So this is my last question about the, um, Great South Bay concert series. Do Patchogue residents get a discount on the ticket?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
And what amount would that be? A couple of dollars. Couple of dollars?
It's like fifteen percent.
All right, so the reason I ask that is because the, uh, Great, Great South Bay concert promoters already announced that they got the Thursday before the meeting for plays. And they're selling tickets to the event even as we're talking here. Thirty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents a pop for the cheapest one for that night, which is a concert. It's starting at five o'clock. But on that website, to get a ticket, there's nothing that says Patchogue Village resident gets anything. So I was just curious about what's going on.
Talk to Joe about that. This, this year, it's gone two dollars a ticket we get.
Yeah, this year, the, the village.
So the village gets a discount. It's not that I get the two dollars.
No, you do. You get the discount. The village gets money back.
Right, we, right, instead of. To, when we first started out, we were billing them for the village, all village services. And then we made an agreement that when we signed a contract with them, they were giving us a dollar a ticket reimbursement, which covered all village services towards the event. This year, the ticket, the ticket contribution from Great South Bay to the village has gone up from one dollar to two dollars a ticket.
Okay, but it's just that I didn't notice a way for the Patchogue Village resident to get the discounts.
I know if you buy it in person, you know, at the van, whatever they call those things, the ticket booths that they set up a day of the event. It does say that there's a price for Patchogue residents.
It would be very hard.
On the website.
It'd be very hard online to give that kind of a discount. Because how do they confirm that you're a resident? I think that, I would suspect that, I don't think. Check it, Jim.
That may be the case, but then they should put on their website, you'll have to go to the ticket box and present proof. Yeah, that, that could be discounted that way. So I think that would be fair.
I think right now they're on a special, uh, pre-sale thing. And I think that's probably be part of the reason why, John. They usually do have it on and you do have to get before you pick up a ticket, give them the proof. I've done it before. But I know right now they're doing like a pre-sale. They haven't even announced all the acts yet. So I think they're even using like last year's price or something. It probably doesn't include the village discount, is my guess. price or something and it probably doesn't include the village discount, is my guess.
Well, I remember in my mind, a long time ago it was twelve dollars and seventy-five cents and now it's thirty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents and suddenly it has changed. The hotel, there's an article in the newspaper about a hotel coming again and you're a part of that article, so I was wondering if you might comment about that.
Well, the hope is, is that the hospital's looking for the possibility of moving there. Dialysis, that's a possibility. And then we've also had two or three hotels, two hotels most recently that have contacted me about taking a tour of the village to see what places may, may or may not be available. You have an issue, you have a place such as where the old Sears was on the corner. If, I don't know if the hospital could get enough money for theirs that they would consider moving dialysis, because I think they've always wanted to have it close to their campus, you know, where they're at. Like I said, it's been interesting over the last, last month, we've had two very interesting hotel developers, developers, so. Some I have given up on, in fact, it was one of my calls when I first came into office, it's, and here I am eleven years later, with the elect to try to do it.
And I just wanna finish up on the point that Mr. Kemp made, but we're gonna be endless in the civils. You know, I don't know what you guys are gonna do about it more time, but what I see happening is slowly and surely the events are getting larger and more days. On next to the Blue Corn Brewery, they're very loud, but you know, the music's okay, they're very loud, but now here they're gonna have even more events during the summer. It's just this creeping amount of events, they turn themselves on the neighborhoods. It's something that needs to be looked at, whether it's addressed by a moratorium or some other method, I'm not exactly sure, but to tell you the truth, I'm not looking forward to the summer, I'm gonna have music for the one bar and another bar and I'm not the only person who feels that.
No, I understand that and like, you know, I can understand with Mrs. Miller and Mr. Furb, which is, they are in C residents, you are in the industrial zones where your property is, so in some way, you have to kinda put up with it a little bit more than Mrs. Miller and Mr. Furb because your neighbor is the name you selected.
I do, you know.
It's okay.
I didn't select him.
What?
I didn't select what, what, remember, sixteen-seat ticket boy, not sixty-six. Look, Mayor, I do, I live with quite a lot of sound, I really do. And by the way, that raises another question, are those sound meters gonna be ready for the, for the upcoming season?
Check Mr. Kemp's.
I don't know, you know, just expressing one sense of frustration, I live with a tremendous amount of sound, I accept a lot of it, but I see it rising and not just in my neighborhood but other neighborhoods as well, and that's my income.
Any other comments today? Yes, indeed.
Hi, everybody. My name is Alice Hickey, I live at the Landings in Patchogue. I want to tell you, I moved here six years ago, I think you guys have all done a great job. I have to talk.
Alice, I'm sorry, your last name?
Hickey.
Hickey I.
I'm sorry.
H I C K E Y.
And you don't Terrence Morgan?
I do, and I wanted to thank you for your call a couple of months back, it was really nice. But I was wondering, with all the talk about the sew project under the avenue, if there was an update, if the landings was eligible?
Well, that's what we're gonna be, we're working now is, that hookup would come out of the governor's office, Sandy Belief, the GOCA, fronting, and they haven't told us in terms of commercial properties, in terms of residential properties. As soon as I hear something, you know, on my, my list, and I see Terrence every Sunday morning for a cup of coffee, so he asks me every Sunday morning, so.
Oh, yes, okay.
He absolutely does.
Well, I'm gonna annoy him then. I'm on the board with him, he sits next to me, I annoy him, so. All right, well, thank you very much.
So far, thank you. I don't know, Mr. Kemp, think about this.
I'd like to speak.
You give me a good one, Mr. Kemp, come on.
This'll be a good one. Nice job, Mr. Kemp. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to bring it to your attention, the town of Hempstead, Mike the Incorporated Village of Hempstead, recently enacted a law regarding feral cats and they had to be spayed or neutered by law. And from what I understand, it was patterned after a law from New York City. So, I have a terrible problem in my neighborhood where one of our candidates for office left a box of moth balls at my house, but I have a problem with cats just-
Did you try them? Did you try them, I spent eight bucks?
They're all gone and they didn't do anything.
They didn't do anything?
No.
Eight bucks for them.
So, I, I exit my house to find cat urine smell all over the place and it's terrible and these cats are roaming around, digging up all my flower bulbs and destroying my property and it's really getting to be a disgusting mess. So, I think, I've asked you to consider no feeding on-
I asked Brian, the village attorney, please, for Mr. Kemp.
I would be happy to speak on that at the next meeting.
Okay, I'd like to, briefly, yes, you'll pick up, thank you.
Okay, I've also understood that Brookhaven Town may now be looking at that law also because they spent over two million dollars for their animal shelter, so they may be looking at it also.
Well, you know, Mr. Kemp, it's already prohibited on public property.
Feed?
Correct. Can't harbor, feed, own, possess, be charged with or anything and to allow your animals to soil, defile, defecate or otherwise use it, then you can't feed them on, on public property. That was passed in two thousand fourteen.
On public property, but not private property?
Correct. That's gonna be a very difficult constitutional standard to prohibit somebody from doing that on their private property. I can tell you that right now.
Yeah.
I will, I will look at the Hempstead law, but it's going to be, there's gonna be strict constitutional scrutiny on that from a libertarian standpoint.
From, from what I understand, it was patterned after a New York City law, so apparently it exists in at least two New York State jurisdictions.
I'll take a look for you.
Thank you. Okay, all right, thank you.
Love you too, Jerry.
Hello, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yeah, I'm sir.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor and trustees.
Name?
Brooksia, Brooksia and Attorney Egan. First, I wanted to thank-
Name and address.
Daytree, three five three South Country Road, Brookhaven. First, I wanted to thank Trustee Hilton as a member and past treasurer of the new Patchogue Community Garden for helping us to reorganize and get that off the ground, thank you. And then I wanted to speak, what I thought was about the plastic ban law, and in this, I'm representing myself and Jose Benia, the owner of Bravo Market. He's read all the comments that I have and signed off on and knows that I'm here to, to present a case that we agree on totally.
Yeah, stop, Mr. Kemp.
And, and I realized tonight, through the other people speaking, that I'm really speaking also about garbage. Because the real problem here in Patchogue, as opposed to Southampton and East Hampton villages, is that the problem here is about the disposal of these plastic bags, not the dispensing of them. In those places, as well as in Champagne, the other community that the committee has recognized as having similar problems solved by a similar law, is that their major dispensers of plastic bags are within the community that they are passing the law about. In Southampton, there is the major supermarket, the hardware store and everything within the village and very little just outside the village. So, when you pass that law, you're passing in law where the business people within the village are working on the even playing field. In this particular case, most of the supermarkets, the hardware stores, the other big stores that dispense these plastic bags are just on the outskirts of the village. So, even though Bravo Market just happens to be, and I know you're not picking on Bravo Market, but it just happens to be that they dispense more plastic bags in the village than probably everybody else in the village combined. Yet, they're only a very, very small part of the plastic bags that are thrown away within the village. So, in passing the law, you're hurting a business that we'd like to keep here, I think all of you would like to keep Bravo Market here. And really, it would be more fair, though maybe much harder to control, if you pass a law that stopped the importing of plastic bags from just across the border and, or the, or controlled the disposing of the plastic bags, because ninety-five percent of them come from outside the village. Mr. Benia wanted me to, and I agree, tell you that we think that you're doing a marvelous job here in the village in so many ways, in every way, and he's not at all going to oppose your law with any legal scheme or anything else. He supports the village and whatever you decide, he will support that. But he wants you to know that it's gonna hurt him in a financial way. What he'd hope, and, and also I wanted to thank Joe, Joe Keys and the committee, Patty Seal, and David Kennedy for meeting with Jose and I, with Mr. Benia and I to talk over this matter and also to the bid who's been open to hear from us. But we haven't felt yet that the village would be committed to really put some dollars into supporting what the businesses in Patchogue. And I don't want to make a specific thing because you'll, you'll have to work out how you might do this with laws, I know that, when you say you can't do that because that'd be favoring mispersonalization. But just so, just generally speaking, that if you are to pass this, that you put a lot of effort, money and your voices and your shopping into supporting the stores in the village that you are passing this law about. And continue doing that till the time that the town also passes a similar law. Remember, in, in the village of Southampton, it took four years between the village passing the law and Southampton Town passing the law, so it might be a long time of doing that, but he would even support what you're doing vocally if, if you would support him and support the other stores too. I'm mentioning him because he's authorized me to speak for him, so I really can't speak for the other businesses. Let me just look at my notes for you, just to, oh, what I wanted to ask you, was I correct in hearing that now the, hearing from you, that the hearing is now set for May eleventh or was that something else?
May eleventh.
May eleventh is the hearing. And when, and I read the law for both Southampton, East Hampton villages and towns, all four laws are almost exactly the same thing. I've heard though that you haven't decided on what your law is gonna be, or do you think it'll be similar? When will we be able to get a copy of what your proposal for the law is? And after the hearing on the eleventh, how soon would you vote on that? I understand you might vote or could vote legally that same night.
Could that same night.
Right, and that's why I wanted to speak now, so that the public and you could hear and think about this before that date, even though I might speak again at that date. So, when will we be able to-
Well, you know, the committee's not done with final drafts, they're still tweaking some possibilities.
The thing that's taken all, the thing, I'm sorry, Brian, the thing that's taken the longest is trying to accommodate everyone, including Bravo. We don't, we don't wanna hurt anybody with this, you know, by all means, so, David, the chain and I and Attorney Egan have been really, we've changed the wording on it three or four times actually because we wanna make sure that we can make it as painless as possible for everyone, so, you know, we hope by the end of the week maybe to get some wording on it and I'm hoping, obviously, the board, I want to want to see in plenty of time, which is only a few, back to May eleventh and not even by twenty-seventh, because I want everybody to absorb what it is we're gonna do.
And how would I get hold of that as soon as it is available, so I can share it with Mr. Benia and the other-
I can speak to that. Once I notice the hearing, it'll say within the notice that the copy of proposed local law is available to those parks office.
And that'll be the advance or just-
Yep, that'll be the advance.
What, what Mr. Benia thinks would be best is if you spent your energies and your money on encouraging the town to pass this law rather than the village. Again, even if you just did that without supporting the village stores, but just put your energies rather than the village's law into the town law, he would support that too with his voice. Thank you very much for that.
Have you addressed the town at all? Have you yourself addressed the town?
No, I haven't.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kemp. Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.